We're a little bit past 6:30. I will call this meeting to order. Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Paul Gerard. Sam Husnick.
Here.
Kelly Munson.
Here.
Kathy Beistrum.
Here.
And Mayor Bean.
President, I'll ask all those that are able to to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our annual Truth in Taxation meeting. Quick expectations related to timing for this evening. You know that this is a special meeting of council set for 6:30. We have our regular city council meeting scheduled for 7 o'clock. However, I do want everyone to know that this is not a race this evening. If this meeting goes over, we will give this meeting as much agenda time as necessary to get to the budget consideration and resolution, and then we will postpone and hold the city council meeting just as soon as this meeting is wrapped up. So this is not a race. We will take all of the time that is necessary. Also, if you are here, you will notice that we do not have an open forum on the agenda this evening, and that is because there is a public comment period as part of the budget hearing that is on the agenda as item 5B. So if you are here and want to make public comment, that is your time to do so. Staff will go through a budget presentation first. We will then hear public comment, and then the consideration will come back before council for final decision before we adjourn. So with that, council in front of you, we have an agenda for this evening. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. And one more quick housekeeping item. I have heard feedback that our mics are tough to hear for the recording, and so if everyone could just make special effort to speak into the microphones this evening, I'd appreciate it. Okay, 2020 budget hearing. Patrick, are you going to start us off?
I will turn it over to the Finance Director, Sandy, and she will go through the slides and the presentation and let you know everything about the proposed 2020 budget and the levy.
Fantastic. Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Like you said, we're going to be going through the Truth in Taxation meeting, which is a requirement by state statute. And the meeting requirements are set forth as providing a budget summary for the next fiscal year, which will be 2020, as well as provide the proposed levy summary for taxes payable in 2020, and at the end, provide opportunity for public input as well. And this is a definition of what our budgets are, and it has to be by line by line because there is a requirement to have fund accounting in our system. And general fund is separated from other functions within our budgets. General fund, we keep at a zero net balance between revenues and expenditures at 9.787 mil. And I am putting a projected fund balance for 2020, understanding that this is projected. We haven't audited 2019 yet, so there is a projection, but we do anticipate maintaining our $5.6 million fund balance in the general fund. We do have a park dedication fund as well, which the revenues are anticipated to be 164, 267, with expenditures at 372, 141. We do plan on dipping into the fund balance a little bit for projects that are slated, bringing our fund balance to 134, 481. We also have a surface water account that we have to count for, which we are budgeting revenues at 437, 500, and expenditures at 610, 423, dipping into that fund balance, bringing it down to 215, 995. We have a fund called the Drug Forfeiture Fund, which we basically keep revenue and expense neutral, and we've been keeping a fund balance in there now at $23,056. We also have a pavement improvement streets, otherwise known as the capital improvement, which we are using basically for our streets. We are going to be budgeting revenues and expenditures at 5.947, bringing our fund balance projection at 1.518. We also have the bond project fund, which we have to keep separately from the other funding sources because it is money that we are getting from the bonds that we have to put into a separate account, which is the $4 million of revenue, which we have expenditures slated at 1.373, bringing our fund balance to 2.627. We also have an EDA account, Economic Development account, where our revenues and expenditures are pretty much equal, bringing our fund balance at 166,332. We also have an airport fund that we have to keep separately. We have revenues slated at $128,226 and expenditures at $119,307, bringing our fund balance to 103, 982. And I just want to state that we have forward or transferred some fund balance, a negative fund balance from the airport pavement fund, which is reflected in there of $79,000, which is anticipated to happen in the 2019 audit. Capital equipment is another fund that we have to account for. This is revenues at $863,067 and expenditures at $2,056,707, bringing our fund balance down. We are purposely trying to spend that down with the needs that we have of $146,080. And I do want to say that we are excluding the TIF and the enterprise funds at this point. The TIF is something that we, you know, don't have to worry for as far as in the budgets. We budget for it, but it's not something that's going to affect the tax levy. And the enterprise funds, we're going to go through at a later point in this presentation. Debt service tax abatement is something that we have to actually, this is part of all the debt service that we have to budget for, which is the principal and interest payments of our bond. We have a separate line item for a debt service tax abatement bond, which we have revenues of $598,930 and expenditures of $594,630, bringing a fund balance into 2020 of $548,191, which is supposed to be paying for the February 1st of the 2021 principal and interest. We also have the new bonds for the roads, which we have revenue source coming in at $300,000 and expenditures at $96,371, bringing a fund balance going into 2021 of $257,129. We have the new refunding of the EDA refunding bonds of revenues of $1.381 and expenditures of $1.429, bringing our projected fund balance at $1.186. And the enterprise funds are some things that we have to account for differently, much like a business accounting. So we keep those funds separately, and the debt service for these funds are funded by the enterprise funds themselves. So you won't see the debt service for these funds because it's already in the expenditures that are before you. The water fund, the revenue is at $2.556. Expenditures are $2.389, bringing a projected fund balance of $16.6 million. Sewer fund, $3.5 million in revenue and $3.1 million in expenditures, bringing the projected fund balance at $14.991. And next, I'm going to take those revenue budgets, excluding those enterprise funds and excluding TIF and bond projects fund, and breaking it down between the different kinds of revenue sources that we bring in as a city. And looking at this, the biggest portion that we bring in at this point is a general levy at $43.5. We have some intergovernmental at $26.7. It's a little bit larger this year due to the fact that we are going to be asking for advancements for 2021 and 2022 for our street projects. So normally, it wouldn't be that as high as it is there, but that's what we're going to be projecting for 2020. We also have a debt service levy at $11.6. And if you look at all those other smaller ones, I mean, we have charges for services, which is our next biggest amount of $6.1, but you can look through the other smaller portions of park dedication, other financing, license permits, and miscellaneous. And we also have franchise fees of 3.9%. And next, I'm going to go through the expenditure budgets by function. And this also includes, excludes the TIF, the bond projects, and the enterprise funds. And the biggest portion that you'll see is the operational general fund. This is what we operate our city with, with the general fund dollars, at 46.4%. Next in line, you'll see the capital improvement at 28.2%. And this is going to be a little bit larger than what has been in the past due to the fact that we have these projects with the bonds as well as with the advancements from the state aid. Debt service comes in at 10% of our overall budgets. Capital equipment comes in at 9.8%. Surface water at 2.9. And you can view what the rest of those remaining functions come in at. And then I'm going to break down a little bit further this piece for the general operating fund at 46.4. I'm going to break that down even more granularly to identify some of those functions within that general fund of what exists within that fund itself. And these are the basic functions that are paid out of the general fund. And if you will notice, the public safety, which includes the police at 44.5 and the fire at 7.1. We also have a fire relief pension, which is basically revenue expense neutral of 1.5%. And we have building inspections and things like emergency management and other public safety at 5.3. And that accounts for basically 58% of the budgets in the general fund. And then when you look at the publics, the next in line would be the public works and streets. That's at 16.1%. Parks and Recs is the next at 7.4%. And the remaining, you can view between, you know, administration, general government, general government buildings, is the remaining of what's left in the general operating expenditures. And next, one of our requirements for this presentation is to go through the tax levy summary. And this is what the proposal is for 2020 for the tax levy, breaking it down. And on the bottom line, our total is at $10,851,961, which is a change of $588,641 at a 5.74%. And breaking it down between what the increases existed, the general fund operational proposing at 7.72 is changed to $218,641, which was a 2.9%. Next, we did add $50,000 for pavement improvement, doing our best to keep ahead of the needs of the streets at $50,000. Debt service, this is the old debt service that really didn't change from the prior year. But we did add the road bond for $300,000, which increased that piece, which all in all, when you take all those increases, it comes to a 5.74%. And this is a sample of what the home tax impact for 2020 is going to be based on an example of some whole market values. And these are the 2020 values. And as you will notice, in 2019, when you take the actual 2019 tax estimates or actuals, they're assuming a 5.3 change in market value, and this being Washington County. This is a worksheet that Washington County provides for us and for anybody actually to take a look at to see what the tax impacts are going to be. And in order to make it as comparable as possible, they take the 2019 market value and bring it basically to an equivalent of what it would have been in 2019 of what we have for 2020. So the $150,000 home market value in 2019, it would have been something a little bit less, but it would have been $467.44 of what the actual were in that time. But then when you get to the proposed 2020 tax impact, then that brings it to an estimate of $506.56. And you can look down through there. And going down to the $300,000, the actuals for 2019 was $1,081.71, and the proposed for 2020 tax impact is $1,162.33. So this is an estimate at this point in time of what the tax impact would be. And this is an example of where the tax levies go. And you can read some of the examples in each category. But 71.1% goes to the general fund, which is the major portion of the city's budget. Capital equipment at 6.9%. Capital paving, which is our capital improvements, at 0.5%. Debt service, 21%. Economic development at 0.5. And I do want to say part of that bond improvements is included in that debt service. And this is an example of some of the levy increases that have happened since 2015 and kind of give an idea of where we landed in 2020 proposed and where we've been in the past. And this is a history of our tax rate. In 2020, our estimate at this point in time, based on what we had proposed for our tax levy, is 40.108. And you can see what our past tax rates have been. And this tax rate is not only affected by the amount of property taxes that are proposed, but also by the growth within our city. And that does have an effect on where that tax rate ends up being. And with that, if there's any questions.
Could you go back to the levy chart?
Pardon?
Go back to the levy chart for me.
This one?
No, the next one. No, up to where this shows the levy. Yeah, I just want to point out in this tax levy summary that the general fund is, the increase is 2.9%, but all the rest of the increase that gets us to 5.74 is basically for roads and roads improvements. So it's a good, important step that we're starting to take on the road situation, the infrastructure. I just wanted to point out that's more than half of what the levy increase is.
Thank you. Ms. Counsel, any points of clarification or immediate questions that you would like to ask of staff? Otherwise, I would maybe suggest we hold the bulk of our discussion till after we've had public hearing, but I want to make sure there's no questions before we do that. Any questions before we open up the public hearing? All right, tonight is a public hearing. As you come up, I would invite you to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And there is no, I don't believe, is there a sign-in sheet for tonight? I don't, is it no? There is not a sign-up sheet for tonight, so we will just open the public hearing and invite anybody who's interested in speaking to come up one by one. And with, maybe we do have a sign-up sheet. And if you're not signed up and you would like to speak, that is fine. We will add to this list. Thank you. So we do have one on the list to start, Jerry Grunner. Welcome.
Good evening. Jerry Grunner, address is 9444 Jewell Lane North. Forest Lake, of course. I am president of the Forest Lake Lake Association, and I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the budget for the lake. There are several of our board members from Lake Association that are also here, so I want to recognize them also. First of all, I want to thank the council and staff for the hard work you've done in working on the 2020 budget. I know from my own personal career, developing a budget like this, and the pros and cons, the pulling and the pushing, and who gets what and so forth, is an extremely difficult process. It's not something that's easy to do, and there's always more things to fund than there's money. And that's always a constant problem. I understand that, and it's not a task any of us like to do, but it's a task that's necessary. So thank you for that hard work. Back in August, actually on August 26th, the Lake Association had a workshop here in these chambers with city council and staff to kind of talk about, a little bit about the needs of Forest Lake and what we're hoping could be done to improve the lake and problems with the lake and so forth and so on. And it was a great meeting. I think there's a lot of good dialogue that occurred during that session. I know in the departure of that, from the meeting, I know that our board felt good that, you know, I think our message was heard and that I think most people understood kind of the concerns we have from a lake standpoint. In that meeting, we had asked that the budget for the lake, expenditures for the lake, that we asked for a $20,000 increase, you know, which we felt would be, might be appropriate for things that we need to keep doing for Forest Lake, being it is the cornerstone of the city we live in. In looking at the 2020 budget, it appears that there's been a $2,000 increase to that budget. So I did a little more research, and I went back into the city's budget on this line item for the last several years. So in 2015, the budget, the actual expenditure for 3261 code was $62,217. That was in 2015, okay? The budget for 2020 that's proposed right now is $67,226. That's a $5,000 increase over six years. That's a 1.2% increase, which by most people's standards is maybe not very reasonable when you look, I just saw that the average has been 3.9% levy increase starting in 2015, all the way up to 7.4, down to 5%. So the levy increases have been more than 1.2% per year. So it feels a little bit like we haven't been keeping up with the budget levies for the last six years. That being said, I also did some other research about why this lake is important to the city. So according to the DNR, 52% of the people that live in ZIP Code 55025 have at least one watercraft registration. That means one out of two people here in this room own a watercraft, which means many of them use Forest Lake for those watercraft. The DNR also states that 46% of ZIP Code 55025 population use the lake in some capacity over a course of a year. That means they go to the swimming beach, they go boating in their own boat, they go boating with friends, they go ice fishing, they go hunting, whatever it is. 46% of 55025 ZIP Code, okay? So when you look at that, you have to say yourself, geez, I think Forest Lake is the largest park in the community if that many people are using the lake as a park. So it's important that we protect, improve, and maintain the lake from a quality standpoint so it remains the premier lake that it is. You know, none of us want to see any park degrade, nor do we want to see Forest Lake degrade either. Once that happens, no different than the struggle we're having right now from an infrastructure standpoint, roads and streets and sewer. Once you get behind the eight ball, you'll never, ever catch up again. So our concern as a Lake Association is a 1.2% increase that we've seen to this budget line item over the last six years. You know, feels maybe a little inappropriate, you know, for the timing of things. So we'd ask the council to reconsider the amount of monies for this particular line item under Code 3261 and that the $2,000 increase be increased by something more, wherever you can find the monies or increase the levy or whatever, I don't know. But it just feels like the lake has suffered over the last six years on an average basis increase over the last six years. Not that many of you were here over the last six years, that is the council, but it doesn't make no difference from that standpoint. Lastly, I want to also ask for some transparency here in the financials from a standpoint that Code 3261 is called Weed Harvester. That's a carryover from 10, 15 years ago. It's not Weed Harvester, that $67,000. It's to be used for the lake. So what I would ask, and I've gotten calls from residents saying, how come the city's not out there with the Weed Harvester? They got $60,000 in that budget. How come they're not working out there with Weed Harvester? Well, they don't understand. That's not what it's for. So I would ask that you change the heading on that line item and not call it Weed Harvester, but call it Lake Improvements. And I would also ask that you have a subheading because that particular line item is not just for Forest Lake. That line item is also for Clear Lake. So there's funds that come out of that account that go for Clear Lake also. So I think it's important that the people here understand what goes to Forest Lake, what goes to Clear Lake. So with that, I hope you would consider our request, and thank you for your time. If you have any questions, happy to answer them or call me.
Thank you for being here. That is all. We had signed up. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak this evening? Welcome.
Hello. John Vedi, I live on 210th Street North. I'm here with my son, William, and my daughter, Adely.
Hi, Adely.
I apologize, my wife is unable to make it because she's at the White Bear Lake School District School Board meeting that she attends every other Monday night. We've lived here for 10 years, and I just want to thank the council. This is the time of the holidays and Thanksgiving, as we just had passed. We haven't been able to come up to a council meeting recently, but we have been able to get signed up on the weekly emails regarding issues with the council, upcoming meetings, and budgets. And we feel that the budget has been very carefully looked through. We feel that the infrastructure projects have been very appropriate and the foresight of making sure we have good roads and projects has been very, has been done very well and thought out very well in the past six to 12 months. We also are pleased that we've been able to reach agreements with the local bargaining units to keep our very strong police department and fire departments going, and we thank you for that. When we talk about owning boats and watercraft, unfortunately, we're part of the 50% that doesn't own anything. But we appreciate you taking the time to be able to listen to the concerns of members here tonight, and we are very confident that you will pass a successful budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And next. Is there anybody else that would like to speak this evening? And I'll ask one more time before closing public comment period. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the 22 budget this evening? And seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing and bring the conversation back to council. Counsel, I will direct your attention. We have a large packet in front of us this evening. The resolution that staff is looking for, the resolution that staff is looking for consideration is on page 106 of your packet. It is Resolution 1291901. And could we have, just for purposes of this next discussion, could we have that, the deck open as well? And we are on, the resolution is on page 106 of your packet. Going to pause for just a moment. We have some Going to pause for just a moment, we have some joining. And if you are joining us for this evening's regularly scheduled city council meeting that will take place as soon as this special levy meeting has been adjourned, so welcome. Okay, so maybe a quick tee-up of, tee-up of where we are in process tonight, so tonight's truth and taxation hearing and the consideration of the resolution in front of us is the conclusion of what has been about a six-month-long consideration of the budget. During that time, council has had strategic planning discussions, we have had a number of budget workshops, and we have had opportunity for public hearing over those last months to gather information and to refine the process to the final numbers that you see in front of you tonight. And so I would go, turn to council and to see if there's any further questions, clarifications you would like prior to the consideration of the resolution in front of us. Any questions?
I guess, I guess just a comment for me that, and I know I've been in touch via email with Mr. Gruntner and have heard him and his Lake Association loud and clear, and I, and I know that we've had considerable conversation about really taking a good, hard look at our parks, trails and lakes with regard to our strategic planning process, which we unfortunately were not able to fully get through in 2019. But from a personal perspective as a council member, I just want you to know that you've been heard, and it's definitely on the radar as we move forward into kind of fleshing out the details of that strategic plan, which will happen sometime during 2020.
Okay, good. Any other questions this evening?
I'd just like to make a comment, I mean, as far as, and I concur with Kathy, I mean, we worked hard on this budget and it kept getting higher and higher and higher, and of course, the big thing that, that I was certainly in favor of was the bonding for the roads. We're so far behind in that stuff, and to be able to keep it under 6%, you know, the total levy, that, that was where I wanted to be. You know, it started out at like 8.59% or something like that, and we worked hard to get that back down so it was a lot more manageable. And, but there's such a high priority for this one thing, the other things kind of had to level off for a little while. So, you know, the police department didn't get what they wanted either, you know, that kind of thing. So, I hope everybody kind of hangs in there, and we can hear you, we know, we realize that there's some issues out there that need to be addressed. And, you know, as far as the lake is concerned, I agree with you, that's our biggest asset here in the city, Forest Lake. No, no, there's no question about it. And we just got to try to work in something where we can, you know, make sure that we keep you in mind, no question about it. Because I use the lake too, no question about it. And I've lived here at the same address for 40 years, so, all right, that's all the comment I want to make.
I would just add too that we worked really hard on the budget in that, you know, like my fellow council member said, we do hear you. I personally live on the lake and a member of the Lake Association, in fact, commute to St. Paul every day, and people ask me why I live so far out, and I always say it's because I love the lake. And so I think as we move forward, that's definitely something that should be a priority. I agree, I think it's one of our biggest assets, and I see people, people come from all over to use it, and it's something that we can build off of, so I just want you to know that, that we hear you.
I guess I would just chime in, Councilmember Gerard asked the question at one point during this process about, is it enough? And we all shook our heads and said, no, actually, we're probably, there's, there's a lot left to do, whether we are continuing on the infrastructure plan and continuing to close those gaps. Downtown redevelopment isn't where anybody wants it to be. We are still supporting both commercial and residential growth. We heard a lot of feedback about parks of all types, certainly the lake is a part of that, but we also heard a lot about trails and connectivity of residential, both walking and biking paths within the community. And so there is a lot of good reasons on why this number tonight could be much larger. I will point out that the number that we are landing on tonight as a final is a smaller number than what was sent out as part of the preliminary tax certifications and part of, it's smaller than what was part of that preliminary tax notification that everybody received. And that is in, I also hearing feedback of, we can only do so much in one year, and we need to make this decision tonight with both the long view of where have we been in the past and what has that number been in the past, and where does it need to be in the future. And so I'm comfortable tonight that it's never enough, but it's a good number on where we've landed right now in this point in time. And I can feel comfortable that where we've started to make investments and improvements is in the right area, knowing that there's still a lot on the list. And so we are not done, but annual budgets require an annual decision, and so we have, I think, bit off as much as we can chew, and we've heard feedback on both sides of we need to be doing more, and also feedback of residents can only support so much, and so that is the balance that we are trying to find tonight. So, there's any other comments anyone would like to make? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 1291901.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of Resolution 1291901, a resolution setting the 2020 tax levy and adopting the 2020 general fund budget.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to add a quick thank you to staff for the work in getting us to this point, and also a thank you to all of the residents who have participated in feedback, both formal and informal, participated in the strategic planning process. We hear you, thank you for being engaged, and we look forward to what's ahead. So, thank you. And with that, I will call the vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. We have a budget for 2020. That being our last item on the agenda this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and before we do that, I am going to suggest we adjourn, allow council just five minutes to get reset, and then we will start with a regularly scheduled city council meeting. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, and we're adjourned. City council in five minutes.